Is the cameras on and Mary Ann stated we'll get started. All right, evening. I am now reopening this meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. It's Tuesday, January 28, 2014. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 18, 2013 emergency special meeting?
Move.
All those in favor? That's Schulkin, Rosenbaum, Burns, and Quinteros. Opposed? Abstaining. Abstaining is Dalbert, Flyshower, and... Lion, sorry. I should just say your first name. It's lion easier.
Diane Once.
Diane Once, right. Got everybody. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 14, 2014, regular meeting?
So move.
By Marc. Second by Lisa. All those in favor?
Wait, wait, do we?
Oh, does anyone have any changes here? Sorry about that.
I have a couple of minor things. On... Don't just remember.
No.
All right. So on the...
It's 14.
On the 7th page, in under 4.1, in the first full paragraph on that page, the first sentence, Mr. Zip explained the district's responsibility for students who are aging. I think that should be into rather than out of. Into early intervention when they turn 3?
Yeah. Yeah, they're not aging out at 3 years old.
Right.
We'll check with Mr. Zip just to be sure.
Could you get services before 3? And you also get services before 3?
Well, CPSC is before you start kindergarten, right? So that's what I thought was addressing there. All right, but yeah.
I know, like their early intervention programs up to age 3, and then their age intervention programs at 3 to 5, I think is the standard.
They did age out early intervention until they turned 3, they went to preschool.
CPSC.
Okay.
So early intervention is like a technical...
And then on the... So 2 pages after that, the Finance Committee report, the 3rd line is just a stray "it" between "but" and "information." And that's all I have.
Any other amendments?
One quick thing. Back one page at 4.4 in the Curriculum Committee report, in that first paragraph, in talking about suggesting a presentation as part of the 9th grade parents' meeting, it's a presentation to 8th grade parents as part of that 9th grade meeting. Including 8th grade parents for the 9th grade.
Give Mary Ann a second here.
Suggesting a presentation as part of the 8th grade and 9th grade.
No, a presentation to 8th grade parents as part of the 9th grade parents' meeting.
Just an insert to 8th grade parents.
They would be included if they wish.
Presentation to 8th and 9th grade parents. Diane, do you have something?
Under 4.2, second to the last paragraph, paragraph starts with Dr. Quinteros raised a question regarding auditing costs. Mr. Brenell addressed the district's most recent capital project, but I have specifically raised the question of the historical cost, actual expenses for internal auditor in the years 2010, '11, and '12, when we didn't have an internal auditor.
So what's the change?
Dr. Quinteros raised a question regarding historical cost of actual expenses 2010, '11, '12 for an internal auditor, and the school did not have an internal auditor.
I have the information. I'm just trying to figure out a good format to give it to so that you can understand it.
Okay, any other suggestions, amendments? Do you have that, Mary Ann? Is that all set for you from your end? Okay, thank you. All those in favor as amended for the minutes as mine. That's unanimous, that motion passes. Okay, we come now to the part of our meeting for public comment. If we have any members of the public who'd like to comment, you can raise your hand and acknowledge you. And if you want to stand up and say your name and make your comment, that would be great. Would anyone like to speak? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to our reports and discussion. We're gonna... Our auditor is not, external auditor who's here for our report has not yet arrived, so we're gonna move to 4.2.
He's not around.
Oh.
He had it this Wednesday on his calendar.
Okay, so we've just been informed that the auditor had it calendared incorrectly on the report to the board, so...
We'll have to reschedule that.
We'll have to reschedule that. Okay. We'll move on then to our intrascholastic athletics report, and for that we have Mr. Boucher, our athletic director. So we'll turn it over to you, Steve. Thank you for being here.
Oh, no problem. Okay, we'll start with our annual...
You come a little closer to the microphone. You'll be a bigger YouTube phenomenon than you are already.
We'll start our annual beds update, which is a popular topic in the sporting world. I see some new faces. Our beds number is, if you haven't heard, is the driving force behind the classification in sports. And a beds number is determined on beds day, the first Wednesday of October. And for classification for next year, we take this year's 9th grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade.
Enrollment.
Enroll, yes. This year, we were, again, extremely concerned with our beds number because it was a very close number to a cutoff number. Our beds number is 279, and the cutoff to go to a Class B school is 200. So next year, we will be a C school, as long as those numbers are accepted by the NISFA Executive Committee, which meets on January 31. My understanding is that the state head department gets the numbers and then reports them to the NISFA, and then they accept the numbers. I do not anticipate there will be any discrepancies with our numbers, so we should be all set. And we'll be a C school again next year, and we'll see what happens the following year. Speaking of that, in the beds number world, New York State tries to, in the five sport classifications, soccer's, boys and girls, basketball, baseball, softball, to have 20% of the schools across the state as a double A school, 20% as an A, and B, and so forth, down to D. So there are 5 classifications, 20% of the schools in each section. That's why they keep modifying the cutoff numbers. I've argued this at length with the state, that it's not really a true 20%, because there are D schools that have beds numbers of 12, that will never field a team on their own, they're always merging. So they are counting 2 schools, which has 2 schools, opposed to 1 school. They actually finally listened, the state did. They formed an ad hoc committee this year to look at this. However, the ad hoc committee just reported that they see no problem with the way that it's working. So I'm hopeful that coming up, maybe soon, someone will eventually listen.
Steve, if I could, I rarely do this, which has come to the aid of the State Education Department. But when you talk about the state, we're not talking about the State Education Department. We're talking about the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, which is an entity apart from and distinct from the State Education Department. We lovingly refer to them as the state, but they're different beasts entirely.
And the NISFA always makes sure that they point that out to the athletic director. We are not the state. In our world, the athletic world, they are the state.
Because they are the governing body.
They are the governing body, certainly.
So in terms of beds, I'm hopeful that soon somebody will wise up and realize that the 20%, 20%, 20% isn't the way it should be. But in the role of the state, things move slow. There was one change to the beds number classification, so there is the five sport classifications for the major sports. They call those the soccer, basketball, softball, baseball. The other sports have modified numbers because there are not as many schools that have those sports in their repertoire. So football this year changed their cut numbers. I mention that because football, not changing their cut numbers last year, had an impact upon our football merger with FDR. They are changing the cut numbers this year for football, and FDR is going back to a double A. So if I were to go out of order, and I know we have discussed, and I know at the last meeting you had, one of our athletes come and speak about the experience at Spackenkill, and you received a letter from the Spackenkill football coach. Joe, myself, Tom, Ed, we've been talking about what we're going to do in terms of football merger next year. This afternoon, I received an email from FDR saying that, at this point, they're not sure they want to merge again. They feel that their number is declining to the point where they could go back to being an A next year, so they don't know if it would be good for us to come in. In addition to that, their varsity coach seems to think they're going to be making cuts this year, so they wouldn't want to bring our kids in and then have to cut some of their kids. So that kind of... At that point, we felt pretty confident this afternoon that we would recommend that maybe we would again look to go to Spackenkill. About 4:00 or 10:00, I received a phone call from Spackenkill stating that, the way the beds numbers are for them, it doesn't make sense for them to merge because within the Class B, they bump up into the higher division of Class B, and they don't feel they would be as competitive. So at this point, we have no dance partner for football. So, you know, there is one other district that I have to look to, but I'm not overly optimistic based upon the conversation I had last year, in case that it would be a potential merger for us. So we're kind of stuck right now. We'll see what happens. In the whole merger world, the state, the NISFA have been making changes how mergers are going about. One of the things they did was they changed, rather than, we used to count complete beds numbers of schools merging, it's now percentages of the smaller school that's merging. So our 279 used to be added right to FDR or Spackenkill's number. Now it's a percentage. Whether you're a B or a C school, it's 30% of your beds number. So our number next year, that we would be adding to a school would be 83.7, so 84 students would be added to their enrollment. So I'm kind of hopeful that maybe we'll find somebody, but not overly optimistic at this point.
And not Spackenkill or Hyde Park?
Not Spackenkill or Hyde Park right now. We'll see what happens as Spackenkill talks to the section and see whether or not they could stay down in that lower division. That meeting doesn't happen until February 5. With the new merger rules, they've also asked that all mergers for the fall be completed by the Executive Committee meeting of the NISFA in January, which is January 31, so we're kind of stuck. But I'll do my best and see what we can do.
If there's anything that we can do to advocate for, you know, perhaps through a lot of the superintendent?
I will...
Please pursue any efforts.
I will swing the heavy hammer when needed.
Heavy hammer.
That's our beds update. In the NISFA update as well, our new executive director, Robert Sayes, who came to us last year from Mexico, one of the first things that he noticed going on in New York State is the mixed competition rule. And perhaps, I mean, it hasn't really been an issue here in our section, but throughout the state, there's been some instances where mixed competition is where you have males playing on sports that are designated for females, or females playing on sports that are designated for males. It's really becoming an issue, mostly with volleyball, where boys are playing on a girl's volleyball team. And it became pretty big news this year down in Section 1, in the Yonkers area, there were a couple of boys that wanted to play on a team, and the NISFA said no, and then it started to go up from there. So he is forming another ad hoc committee to look at the mixed competition rules and whether or not we need to modify them from where they are right now. So as we get to that point, I'll let you know. For us, it hasn't really had an impact on us. In terms of mixed competition, we've had girls that play on our boys' tennis team. That's really all we've had. Neighboring district Red Hook, a couple of years ago, had a boy on the field hockey team, and that's really about it in Section 1. Profit sharing, which actually should be revenue sharing, I'm not used to that. Another thing that Robert Sayes has done is he has gone out and he has gotten corporate sponsorship for a lot of things. That's his goal. He's revamped the website. He's trying to make the NISFA more of a marketable entity. The first contract he signed over the summer was with Time Warner, a 10-year contract to televise the NISFA championships. He gave out $45,000 to the 11 sections this year. For our section, that amount is $2,441, which will be divided amongst the 46 schools, so, you know, it's something. Not a whole lot, but something.
Should he increase the budget for that one?
The other current sponsorship that he has, he got the American Dairy Association to sponsor the football championship and the boys and girls basketball championships. So those are now the American Dairy Association Dairy Council New York State Public High School championships in most lines. So that's his... His goal is to get one for every state championship, some sort of sponsorship. Another thing that came out of NISFA was the Battle of the Fans. They're trying to generate a whole lot of excitement, so they had this competition where schools would submit a 3-minute video for the Battle of the Fans, who has the best fan section. Our video club, I gave this to Mr. Nugent, and Mr. Nugent ran with it, did a very nice job with his group. It was posted on YouTube. I'll have the link shared with all of you. I found it very entertaining. They did not make the finalist cut within NISFA.
There's no justice.
But they should have won. Moving on to the Section 9 MHL update, there were some pretty intense meetings going on this fall. The Mid-Hudson Athletic League, which is the athletic league that we are a part of, has been, we call it a small mom-and-pop shop since we've been here. It's very nice, very low budget, but we get a lot of things done for that low budget. Whereas to Orange County, which is the other athletic league within Section 9, they were kind of like, as our athletic coordinator Dennis Burkett said, they're like the Cadillac, they were like the Chevy. They had all the services you could possibly imagine. They have a full-time office of 8 people, and, you know, we had part-time employees doing great work. This summer, they started having talks about merging office services. And at first, everyone said, there's no way. Their dues are considerably higher than ours. They started looking at things, and the Orange County Interscholastic Athletic Association put forward a proposal to us where we consolidate offices. This created some tension for a while, and we sat through numerous meetings, Joe and myself.
He brought the heavy hammer too.
And, you know, eventually, it was what was best for the league, and there was also going to be a cost savings with it. With that, next year, so our dues, rather than be by every school paying the same, is now going to be structured by beds number, which that's my only concern, and I brought this up because we are a school that seems to fluctuate from B to C. And there's a $3,000 difference between being a B versus being a C. So next year, we're going to have a $5,000 savings. However, if we were to jump to a B the following year, that would be $3,000 that we have to kind of hold off and make sure that we still have. So in terms of what everyone will see, there'll be no difficulty. There'll be an easier protocol for my office when we have to cancel games. Rather than call every official, we just call one office staff person, and then they call all the officials. So that will be considerably easier for us. They're going to be providing all of the various different office staff for running our office, for scheduling games, for scheduling officials. They're going to revamp our website, which is in need of it. So we're hoping that this will be a movement in the right direction. With that, because there was some... There's been some tension between the Orange County League and the Mid-Hudson Athletic League for years, because the Orange County League basically runs everything. With that, there was some promise that they would relook at the way things have been operating. So at this point, they're making a change to the Section 9 constitution, where the Athletic Council will now include a superintendent from every county that is part of Section 9, so Dutchess, Ulster, Orange, and Sullivan. We have somebody who may be filling that seat close by here, possibly. We're working on it. In addition to that, with the revamping of the Section 9 Athletic Council, we're also revamping the Mid-Hudson Athletic League office and the structure of it. So we're going to mimic more of what the Orange County office has in terms of an athletic coordinator, a president, a vice president, and then 2 superintendents opposed to 1 superintendent, because we do span 2 counties. And what we found is that part of the issue that was going on this fall is that the 2 counties didn't talk. So Ulster was being represented really well, but Dutchess was kind of getting forgotten about them. So at this point, we have a superintendent in our nearby vicinity who may be taking that position as well. I'm hopeful.
12 districts out there.
Those are the changes happening with the league. The other significant change that you'll notice next year is that we are in the process of expanding. Kipsey has been approved to join Section 9 last year, this year, and they will be joining the Mid-Hudson Athletic League, so we are getting Kipsey. The thought is that there were some other schools that were going to be joining us, but those board meetings got a little hot. So hopefully, next year or coming up in the future, we'll add the likes of Arlington, John Jay, Ketchum, Beacon, Pauling, and it will become more of a local athletic, which will be nice. That's a potential change for the Section 9 constitution. I was kind of all over the place. The Section 9 constitution, part of this whole negotiation, the... Orange County had kind of had all of the votes in their favor. They agreed to relook at that over the summer, so they're proposing that the whole constitution be opened up, looked at, and one of the things that we're pushing for is one school won't vote. So Orange County will still have more schools, they'll still have a vote, but at least it won't be rubber stamped. If Orange County wants it, Orange County gets it, because we could still get some of the smaller schools to sign with us in Orange County. Sometimes that will help. Any questions so far? Some of the good news. This past fall, we did have some championship teams. Division championships went to boys soccer and girls soccer. Boys went on to the MHL to win the conference championship, lost in the league finals. It was a great game down in Marlboro against the Walk Hill. They then went on into sectional play, and the boys won the Class B Section 9 championship on a rainy day down in Middletown. On that weekend, Kate Bergen represented Rhinebeck in swimming at the Section 9 championships, and she won 2 Section 9 championships in the 500 freestyle and 200 IM. So from there, you go to states. On the state level this year, boys cross country, Dante Penepen qualified for states based upon his results at the Section 9 meet. However, Dante turned down his invitation to the state and opted to not run. He just didn't feel like he was running at his best at this point, and he gave it up to another member of Section 9. The boys soccer team went on to the Southeast Regional finalist game, and it was a heartbreaking loss. I think there were 10 seconds left on the clock, I was told at the end. Yeah.
Why did you have to bring this up?
And in girls' swimming, Kate Bergen went up to the state meet and finished 8th in both the 500 freestyle and the 200 IM. We are scholar athletes, student athletes, and this fall, we had 50 all-MHL academic athletes on our varsity teams. To do that, they had to maintain an average above 90 in the fall, in the first quarter. The winter athletes will be named once the second quarter grades come out, and then the third quarter grades are what drives the spring athletes. In addition to that, the New York State Scholar-Athlete Team Award, where we take, depending upon the sport, a certain number of kids from that sport, and get a cumulative average. If it's above a 90, then they get recognized as the New York State Scholar-Athlete Team. This fall, we had girls' cross country, field hockey, boys soccer, girls soccer, girls swimming, and volleyball. It was a nice showing. All of them are recognized at the annual Varsity Awards Night, which this year is on Wednesday, June 5, at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium, and you are all invited to attend. Goals for this year. My first goal was to address the football issue, which we already have. So I have a few days to work on this, and I'm going to see what I can do in the next few days, and if somehow we can get by that January 31 deadline and convince the section that Spackenkill shouldn't move up, we'll do the best we can. Increased participation in varsity, boys and girls swimming. Boys and girls swimming was added last year, as you know. Girls' swimming is a fall sport, really hard to get more kids there, but one thought that we have, and I've been working with a neighboring district about potential mergers there, where it would be a logical fit, and it would help us and it would help them. In addition to that, our boys' swimming this year, we started out, and within the first week, we'd lost a few, and then the second week, we lost a few more, to the point where it became a team of 3. And that doesn't make sense for us to run a team with just 3 swimmers. So we're working to also increase those numbers. Boys' swimming is a winter sport, which is, that's a great time for us to have another offering, because right now, we only have basketball. I have mentioned to the state a couple of times so far, and I'll keep mentioning it, that it would make more sense for boys and girls swimming to both be winter sports, because there are very many opportunities for the athletes in the winter. Another thing that we've been talking about, Ed and I, is to add time to our athletic trainer during the course of the day. We are fortunate to have Samantha Robbins back with us this year. Since I've been here, it seems like we get 2, maybe 3 years out of an athletic trainer, because it is not a position that will maintain, you know, time. So if we could add time to their day, perhaps we could get someone that could stay a little longer. Sam's been a nice fit for us. In addition to that, as the state has given us the concussion return to play protocol, Sam has been the individual in our district to oversee that. Adding time to her day would aid in the ability to see not only the athletes, but also students that have concussion, the need to go through a return to play protocol. In addition to that, Sam's been doing a really nice job rehabbing our athletes, and some athletes that have ninth period free currently. Sam comes in about 2:00, quarter of 2, 2:00. They'll be waiting for her to get here so they can get ready, get back from an injury, or get on a bus and get going where they need to go. So if there was some... So if there was some way that we could add time to the athletic trainer's day, that would be great. Question?
Yes. How much time do they currently get and how much time do you want?
How much time do they currently get? I believe, I believe, because this was done before I was here, I believe it is an extra pay for extra duty stipend. And that would go from, I believe it was figured out from 2:30 to 5:30 or 6:00 every day, I believe. I believe when we had talked, we were looking at an hour or two a day. What that looks like financially, I have no idea.
Tom does.
I think the guy in the green shirt might know. While we're talking about money, this past year, we were able to add money to these sports that are currently using booster clubs to fund. It would be easier for them if we were able to support more of that through the general fund. And I think that that would be great for our student athletes as well, so that kids don't feel as though they're in a situation where they have to fundraise in order to be able to play on a sport. That's not what initial class athletics is supposed to do. And not to play off too much, but what I've found is during my course of teaching, coaching, being the athletic director, is that when we can have teacher-coaches, seems to be a better fit. Teachers seem to know, you know, our students, teachers seem to know how to relate to our parents and the kids and get the most out of them. If we could increase the number of teachers that we have coaching, I think it would be great for all of our programs and I'm working on how to do that. Any other questions?
Steve, does, you know, I know the booster clubs act independently, but is anyone, and we used to have a booster club for that, you know, SOAR box. Any discussion ever from those booster clubs or other parents about a model where there was, there would be one booster club that raises money to offset the costs of all the sports?
There was some discussion about that, but it kind of dies because there needs to be somebody that steps up and takes that initiative. We had SOAR, we had a rather strong personality that was able to do that. And, you know, when, I'd like to believe that if there was a need, that we would have people that stepped up and did that. I think it could be beneficial, much like the PTA, PTSO is, it would be like that, but for sports. Requires quicker time.
Yeah. Okay.
So can you tell a little bit more about this fall? How many kids ended up participating during that stat club?
We had five kids this year participated.
And what were they, were they modified A or D varsity?
Well, stat kill didn't, they ran a modified A. Modified A, some of you are going to be hearing more of. What modified A is, it's seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. You can only play teams, well, you could play any team, but generally, you're only going to play teams that are organized in a safe fashion. So once more schools go to modified A, that's what you're going to see more of, just because it's hard to field full football teams at this point. So we had four kids on modified A and one kid on varsity.
We had anticipated more because the numbers were better when we were merged with Hyde Park, but for any number of reasons that you could speculate, when it actually came time to sign up, we only had five. So it was smaller numbers than we had initially anticipated would be participating.
And I guess, do you know the total cost that the program ended up being with the addition of transportation costs?
We're working on that today.
Durham has not billed us for that particular run at all, so we don't know what that cost is yet. Don't know why, they just haven't. The cost of the individual was, was it $955?
$955.
So that was the cost to spend.
Excluding transportation.
Excluding transportation.
But the transportation is going to, minimum of 10 grand, minimum.
And that was in addition to the budget line that was already for football?
The transportation's held separately and there is already money set aside for that, so that money was there. So the cost of the football program was not more than what we had budgeted for at all. Actually, it ended up being less.
Right, but I'm just trying to figure out for five kids, how much total money are we spending, you know, if we're looking at pursuing?
I'm going to say it's probably going to be around $3,000.
$3,000?
Yeah.
Per student?
Per student.
Per student.
Altogether, it's probably going to be about $15,000.
Obviously, when you're dividing transportation costs by five students as opposed to 15 or 20, that kicks the per-athlete number right out of the park, so to speak.
Typically, 10 in the program?
We, 10 was the low number.
Low number.
We were generally 13, 13 to 16.
Right.
You know, from speaking to some of the kids, I think some agree they were a little bit leery of going to a new school, kids who they've never met. As you heard from Noah, the kids that went absolutely loved it. I think that that probably would have seen our number increase going down there this That's just speculation.
And how many kids are participating in current?
Last year, there were 33 kids on.
Does that contribute to that?
It got up to 15 this year.
15 this year. It was 10 prior.
It had been 10 for many years and we added an additional five in this current year's budget.
So can we at some point during this budget process have a breakdown of how many kids are participating in each sport and how much you are contributing to each sport? Because I think it's a worthy discussion, knowing if we're spending $15,000 for five kids or $15,000 for three kids.
Yeah, they started working on it today, but it's pretty complicated. But, you know, as we go through the budget process, there's no reason we can't put that in. They started doing that already.
I, thank you very much for all this information. Very helpful. There's some data here about gender breakdown in participation in the different seasons. I'm assuming the fall is because there are certain sports that only female athletes take part in. It looks basically pretty much the same in the winter. What is it in the spring? Because there's a pretty big differential between female and non-athletes there. Are there several sports? I mean, I'm just not aware what the sports are in the spring where you'd only have female athletes.
Your math is wrong, too. The totals.
Or the totals are just wrong. Okay. I didn't do the adding.
The totals are 97, the boys are 15.
Oh, okay. Okay. Maybe I withdraw my questions. I was thinking, wow, we've got some amazingly athletic female students here in Rhinebeck.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, yeah. It's wonderful to see that there's such broad-based participation.
What I have here is that you can, this is, these are all the sports that we offer. I don't have copies for everybody, but this will hopefully clarify. I'm going to check the file of the last one there. You guys, that's, those are all the sports that we offer currently.
We still need.
Surely they can.
We have it in the budget, but it's not in interest expressed.
Dan?
I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about any of our volunteer assistant, volunteer coaches, about how that worked or?
We had a volunteer assistant for softball last year. We had a volunteer assistant, I believe, in baseball last year. The problem is, if you're not a teacher, so if you're a non-teacher, you still have to go through all of the requirements of a regular coach. The state does not recognize it, and this is state ed, does not recognize the difference between volunteer versus coach. So if you're not a teacher, you have to now go through the two child abuse prevention workshop, the same legislation workshop at $35 per course. You have to be first aid, CPR, EED certified, which we cover in-house. You have to now, as of December, as of December 31, take a DASSA course at six hours for $100. You have to apply for a temporary coaching license, $75. You have to be fingerprinted. So this, if you're not a teacher, then it becomes difficult. If you're a teacher, then that becomes a whole lot easier.
Because you have to do most of that to be a teacher anyways.
Yeah. So we didn't have a whole lot of people that wanted volunteer assistance and then we could have a lot of people knocking on doors down too.
It was the first time we did it.
It was.
Also, so the board is aware, Marvin Kreps has received his certification from the state to provide the DASSA training. So he'll be able to provide that to our new coaches who don't have it right in-house. That'll be a benefit to us, to have that right on site.
Other questions for Steve?
Steve, could you just tell briefly, aside from those kinds of trainings that are required, what kind of communication you do with coaches at the beginning of every season to talk about the expectations we have, the district has for how they relate to students and parents and all of their responsibilities?
Positive coaching and...
We have a preseason meeting for all of our coaches where we go through all the nuts and bolts of the season, things that you have to do, and at the same time, we go through the expectations of what we here at Rhinebeck expect of our, of our coaches. They receive an electronic copy of the coach's handbook, which includes the mission and vision statement. It includes the board policies that are applicable to coaching so that they understand what they have to follow. We talk a lot about, you know, positive coaching and how to get the most out of your athletes. And then throughout the course of the season, as issues come up, I'll have candid conversations with them to try to head off any issues that are coming up, that I see or that are brought to my attention.
And I want to acknowledge and appreciate work that you put into a document that talks about the philosophy of the program at the different levels and the expectations of coaches and students and parents. And is that something I assume then the coaches get as well?
That does go to the coaches. That document was actually very, very helpful for the coaches because now it's, it's pretty clear, this is, this is what we're supposed to be doing. This is what you should be doing. And it's also helpful because it's kind of something for them to fall back on and say, this is what I am doing.
Right.
When issues come up.
And do students get that document?
Currently, they are not getting that document.
Any other questions for Steve? I want to thank you very much for being here and I think all of this information about like Section 9 and the hall and scheduling is really important for us to know because, you know, when you're a parent on the sidelines, you don't understand all that goes into it. You're just wondering why something was rescheduled when you have to go to a wedding and it could be your kid's last soccer game. What did Steve do? But I just, no, I really mean that and, you know, I think there are issues, obviously you have to deal with these bureaucracies that are league and section and NISFA related that are complicated and that do impact our parents. I think scheduling is a problem. I'm sure every season, particularly the postseason, you hear from parents who want to attend their kids' events and every year, it's just very complicated. But your work in doing that takes up a lot of time, so I want to acknowledge it and appreciate that.
Thank you. With that in mind, this past fall, with our soccer team, the last game that they played, which was a 1 o'clock start, I started to have issues with the amount of time the kids were missing from school, with the fact that we're playing a 1 o'clock game, which is a home game, you know, no more fans can really get there. So I finally got some, some people to listen to that and they've agreed, the soccer committee as well as other committees have agreed, that they will not be starting games as early. If it means finding an alternate site, they will find an alternate site. Middletown's a great site. However, there are a lot of schools that are, that are putting in turf fields with nice stadiums, FDR, Kipsey's coming in, they have a beautiful field. Marlboro has a very nice field. So it is my hope that in the future, we don't run into a situation where we've got a game at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, but it could be a horrible...
And now we're in halfway. Right. Thank you so much for advocating for those things because kids end up missing a lot of school, so. All right. Well, thanks so much for being here.
No problem.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, we move now on to our principals reports. John?
Just a few things happening at Chancellor, some updates on things I've mentioned in the past, some new items as well. I want to give you an update on peer mediation, I mentioned it before, had some referrals come in this year. We've kind of revamped that process, Mr. Bruto and myself. And part of that has been kind of, two things we wanted to have like a next step for this year. One was a turner, a quicker turnaround for like times to get the students who maybe do get a referral together with their peers and sitting down. So we turned that around within a, within a day or two, actually, which has been great. Another piece that we've been focusing on was just even letting students know. I mean, fifth grade students know because they're actually the ones that, that, you know, put the students' names in, missing the year or something.
Recommended.
Nominate, nominate. The other one's to nominate the 10 students who are our peer mediators. But a lot of the other students, unless teachers really spend a lot of time doing it, we've got a lot of things to do, may not know it's even available if they come across like a conflict in the playground, things like that, and they want to be able to work with us. And obviously, something that's not specific to like the code of conduct, of more students kind of working together. So what we did was, in addition to the peer mediators going to train with Mr. Bruto and myself, they actually also did some advertising within the building, let students know what's going on, kind of took it upon themselves to do that. So I think that's helped. We've gotten more students that are interested in sitting down with peer mediators and Morgan and myself, if possible. So that's been a good success this year and we're looking forward with that. As always, I'd like to let you know, we're working on the theme of compassion this, the last couple of weeks and moving into the next couple of weeks with our common language for all. Good time of year because we're going to make that connection certainly to Dr. King's message around compassion. In addition, teachers have been given some links, website links for ideas for role-playing, conversation starters, questions and things like that. So, which by the way, is a good segue to, speaking of compassion, I just wanted to thank you more of a public forum. Oh, in quite a few classes at Chancellor this year, who picked up the holiday cards, creating holiday cards for Ferncliff residents and we worked with the Lions Club to get those to, I want to thank Ray from the Lions Club also, for kind of picking those cards up that the students wrote and delivering them on Christmas morning to Ferncliff. So that was something they were able to do and once again, I'd like to thank Ray and certainly all the students and teachers who helped participate right in that time of year for the Ferncliff residents. We did have our winter concerts on December 12, full house as usual, grade four and five was at the same time, not an hour or more, at Chancellor. I wanted to also, in addition, another event that we more recently had, thanks to the RSF and members of Bard College, they worked with us on creating Science that app. It was actually pretty impressive on how quickly they were able to get that all together. They worked with me and then the students at Bard. I had mentioned some of the items that, some of the activities that we were going to be doing at our last meeting, but I wanted to let you know as an update, we had over 200 attendees to that activity, that event. And again, I wanted to thank RSF and Lord College for helping me get this night going and a special thanks to the Bard students. I have to tell you, this coming February, it'll be five years that I've been the principal at Chancellor, and I am every year blown away by the level of not only intellect and the commitment that students from Bard have with working with us to organize these things. They, they were actually in touch with me many days prior and literally up to the, to the day of the event and just really put a lot of effort and really loved to kind of put in these activities together. Even solicited some information on what we were currently doing in Science and our building and applied that to some of the activities. So it was awesome. I was actually in the middle of doing interviews that night and took a break so I could kind of run down and see what was going on. It was like standing, you could barely move in the cafeteria, it was awesome. So I want to thank everyone for... So I want to thank everyone for doing that. It was a great event. Hopefully we can continue that. Just also, I had mentioned the LLL Children's Foreign Culture and Language Program, kind of a pilot Spanish language and culture after-school program that was sponsored by the Young Rhinebeck. We did get that going, we're I think about two weeks into the, the program. I was actually there last night while all the students were working in the art room, but they use quite a few different environments within the building, have a great turnout and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to continue something like that as well. Wanted to mention some enrichment opportunities or some of the things that we historically have offered, two of which are in front of you this evening at some point. We have some, I kind of reached out recently to staff, knowing that it was kind of, kind of the second semester, you know, listening to enrichment Mondays, love to kind of get some creative ideas and things in addition to some of the things we normally do. So we'll be offering a STEM club very soon and also a mini maker club. And you'll notice, if you haven't already, I gave you a little bit more of a description of what that is because that's not very self-explanatory, but primarily kind of an engineering-type club. So those are two things that we're going to be offering students very soon. Wanted to give you an update about the parent portal, a school tool. We are, I think, pretty much ready to go. We're going to open it up the, the second quarter. There's a few minor, I kid, of course, we are ready to go, but I have, there's a few minor kind of corrections. I'm still working with Mindex to make sure we're up and ready to go. So we will be opening that portal and sending them, doing kind of a double mailing this semester, reaching out to parents at Chancellor, I'm sorry, this quarter. And then the third quarter, we'll start to, to refine that and make it more as digital as possible. So excited about that. A lot of work went into that. I know it was a long time, but there was really a reason for it and I'm glad with the product. I'm glad, I'm very happy with the product we've, we've come to, to, to create at Chancellor. In addition, just most recently, last Wednesday, our safety team met with local law enforcement and Allen Gofer, our safety plan, to do a bit of a safety audit of our building. We are actually going, we decided at that meeting, and there's some notes coming soon to you, Mr. Fennel, but we decided at that meeting also to, to try to make sure we meet at least twice a year. So we're going to actually follow up once again. We've got some recommendations. We'll be talking about some of the changes we want to make to our safety plan, things like that, improvements. And then we'll probably meet again late May, early June to do that once again. So we'll start bringing our plan and having some of those conversations along with Chancellor. In addition, our folk heritage unit, which we do every year, I think 22 years I think we've been doing it for a while, it's a great, I think, collaboration between movement and music and those two environments in the building. I know Liz and Bill and Sandy work very hard every year to get that going and it will culminate with a performance tomorrow night in the BMS gym. And I also, since we last spoke, the, really isn't in Rachel order, but since we last spoke, the CLS show choir performed for the Rhinebeck Rotary on December 16th. That they, the students, students' parents and grandparents were also asked, invited to attend, so there was a good turnout from what I understand. I was not able to be there, but not only got feedback, but saw a great little article about it. And in addition, they sang, they sang quite a few songs, seasonal songs, including Lady Antebellum's "I Was Here." So with that, we have some upcoming events. February 11, K registration will begin and go through March 1st. We don't shut the doors after March 1st, but that's just the way each year to kind of start to get information and get some numbers for the upcoming year for kindergarten. February 14, superintendent conference day, as you all know, be doing a lot more curriculum work with the staff, moving forward to what we have to get done for the remainder of the year. And then February 28th, excited about this, our thanks to, I want to thank Barbara Olstad, our librarian, for putting this together. We have Nick Brule, author of Bad Kitty Books. I don't know if any of you are aware of any of the, pretty, pretty popular series. He's going to be coming to the library for a school, a school-wide author visit and we're creating an Olympic reading contest, kind of just because of the Olympics and that kind of thing. Classes that read the most amount of pages will win lunch with Mr. Brule, Ms. Olstad and myself. So things happen at Chancellor.
Very good. Any questions? All right. Thanks. Did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say, if you would, please thank all of these teachers who are encouraging these enrichment programs. The STEM club, the mini makers, the preschool math teachers, again, I really want them to know the board, really appreciate that they're doing this.
In fact, one thing I'm just glad you mentioned it because I know we've kind of talked about it here, we're actually going to be doing a bit of a hybrid with the math. Not everyone is listed there because, you know, I didn't get committed until a little bit too late, but we're actually all going to be leading together. So we're going to do a bit of a hybrid with some of the, we're not sure which AIS group we would invite, but then we're also going to have a few teachers, hopefully at least two if possible, to go back to kind of some of the enrichment stuff that we're doing and offer that. So I know that's something you guys have asked about and we'll work together, try to get a copy. So I will absolutely do that for a problem.
Fantastic. A lot of great stuff as always. Thank you for being here to share it.
Thanks. I don't know how much of the difference that makes. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off this evening by reporting out on what's now become an annual event and that's our eighth grade trip to Bard College. Once again, on January 8th, our students travel to Bard College to participate in the citizen science program. Students conducted experiments in the areas of physics, chemistry, biology, robotics and math, cycling through a series of hands-on activities. You'll recall that I mentioned in the fall that we were really partnering with, with Bard College, even more so this year, and I want to echo something that Mr. King spoke about. This year, the graduate fellows that are running this program really kind of stepped up and partnered with Mowgli Middle School and particularly with Ms. Codel in eighth grade science classes and came, did a number of site visits here. They modified a number of the hands-on activities that we were doing when we went to Bard College. Not only did, you know, again, the feedback and my own observation, I think the students really enjoyed them much more and got much more out of them, but they were much closer tied with our eighth grade curriculum. So that was really a positive change this year and we really look forward and hope that that program continues on into next year. Sponsored by the Rhinebeck Science Foundation and again, the Bard College Center for Civic Engagement, a number of our students also shortly thereafter participated in a workshop with anthropology professor Chris Lidner over at Bard. It was titled Hands-on Archaeology of Ancient People at Bard and during this, they studied Native, Native American, local Native American culture. This really comes out of that partnership with, with Mr. Frischknet and Mr. Lidner and I spoke a little bit about it in the fall and again, just another one of these partnerships with, you know, with a local institution of higher learning that we're really excited about. And our new anthropology club, I think I spoke in December about all of our new clubs that we have just recently, just recently begun, but this is another step with our new anthropology club and getting some students out and about in this area to really study, study archaeology, study anthropology, a real hands-on environment. Our eighth grade ELA classes, in, in our eighth grade ELA classes, students have just completed a project titled Taking a Stand: Civil Rights in America. I mentioned this in, in December. This is a new project. This is something tied to the common core and a new project that Miss Cape is undertaking with the help of a couple of local installation artists. Mimi Graminsky has been working with our students as well as Pat Sexton. Students took a look at social injustice through art and through history. They were tasked with creating a visual montage using mixed media. Really, the sky was the limit in terms of how they chose to, to demonstrate and work. And they were honoring those individuals or groups of people that have taken a stand against social injustice throughout history. So the, the big news to that is that as we've just completed this project, we're, plans are underway and I, I think as of early this afternoon, we've got it pretty much set, but we're going to hold a gallery open house for parents and community members. This is going to be next Wednesday evening. We're going to invite parents to view the students' work between 5:30 and, and 7 o'clock. I had a chance earlier today to view just a handful of student projects and to talk to some of the students and, and some of the pieces are really quite extraordinary. So I would invite everybody to, to stop by sometime between 5:30 and 7. It's going to be in the auditorium hallway at the other end of the building next Wednesday night. Our winter choral concert took place on January 16th and going back and highlighting another one of our newly initiated clubs. I think we had two BMS Choir Club rehearsals prior to this concert and despite only having two rehearsals and the fact that I think there are 39 members right now in the BMS Choir Club, the real highlight of the concert on the 16th was the choir club sitting around the edge of the apron on the stage and leaving the rest of the 110-member sixth, seventh and eighth grade combined chorus in a final, in a final piece. So we were excited about that. In other music news, we had six instrumental students and three choral students that were selected to participate in the Duchess County Music Educators Association Junior High of all county festival. This year, they had to submit, submit an audition tape and they were selected. So that was certainly an honor for those students. Recently, representatives from Grace Smith House attended our seventh grade health classes to conduct presentations on abuse and dating violence and healthy versus harmful relationships. Ms. McCracken has really looked at outside organizations to bring some experts in the field in to work with her seventh grade health classes. Additionally, representatives from the Council on Addiction Prevention and Education, as they have done the past couple of years, will join us later this spring to conduct presentations on both alcohol use and abuse and marijuana use and abuse in our seventh grade health Last week, the PTSO held its annual book fair. Thanks to the hard work of Kelly Toussaint, Deirdre Delver, Patty McMelty and several other PTSO members, once again, and I'm always astounded by the amount of time and effort that goes into this activity, but once again, and we don't have the final numbers yet, but sales dictated that PTSO was able to donate more than $1,000 worth of books to our teachers. And those books go into teacher classrooms, they go into this library and they fulfill wish lists that are provided to the PTSO by our teachers. So we're always very thankful for their hard work. In technology club news, and I've hit most of our new, most of our new clubs, in technology club news, enrollment is such that students are now going to have the opportunity to participate in one, one or both of two different groups. Mr., Mr. McDonald has decided that he's going to diversify a little bit because he's working with some of these students at the moment. The first will focus on robotics. Students will be learning advanced programming skills and solving design challenges using the VEX robotics. And the second is going to focus on designing and fabricating prototypes, similar to the work that students did for the Discovery Festival and the contest that was run this past fall. Next Monday, February 3rd, BMS is going to hold its fifth annual Top Chef competition. This activity was started years ago to encourage healthy choices, balanced nutrition, serving size awareness and label reading, to bridge students with members of the local culinary community and to develop a sense of teamwork, bonding and community among students with a similar interest. This is something we kind of, the BLPT started on a whim five years ago and it is a perennial, an annual favorite amongst the students. This year, entries will be submitted and compete in one of three categories, main dish, entree, side dish or dessert. Once again, we have celebrity judges that are going to include eight guest chefs from Terrapin, Rhinebeck Bagels, Garden Street Cafe, Le Petit Bistro Restaurants in Rhinebeck, Taste Buds in Red Hook. We have a number of culinary grads. We have a number of very lucky faculty members. These are always, and I, I still regret to be able to serve as a judge on this, but these are always well-contested positions and I think Dr. Devport's even gotten one this year. He hears, he hears about this in my report every year and he came to us last year and said he wanted it. And again, it's, it's a wonderful event and I invite everybody to stop by. And then just final, final note, our first Quiz Bowl meet, which students have been anxiously waiting, is going to be held on Monday, February 25th. Thank you.
Fantastic. Any questions? As usual, just a lot of great stuff going on. Thank you so much.
It's going to be hard for me to contain my enthusiasm. It's the first I've heard. And in small recompense, our Spanish club is hosting fundraiser this Friday after school featuring some cultural delicacies, including a delicacy called the walking taco and Mr. Kempitzer's, that's one deserved. In class news in the music department, before winter break, we enjoyed a wonderful band concert led by Mrs. Natalie, who joined us this year. In addition, right before break, our men's and women's choir performed for the Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce at Terrapin Restaurant and did another fantastic job. Again, before break, our AP Biology class had an all-day school field trip during which students transformed bacteria. They gave them a trait after successive generations that they didn't begin experimenting with and they also learned how to perform DNHL electrofere- electrofereza. Two of our art students have been chosen to represent Rhinebeck High School at the annual Columbia Green High School jury art show and their works will be on display over at the Community College of Columbia Green during the month of, of February. Thanks to the Arts and Ed Committee, our upperclassmen, art students will be traveling to the Metropolitan Museum of Art February 18th and this gives them an opportunity to see firsthand and in the flesh some of the works of art and masterpieces that they study in their classes. So it's very much appreciated by our, our art faculty. In the Guidance Department, several weeks ago, the Guidance Office held the College Financial Aid Scholarship Information Program for parents of juniors and seniors. It featured speakers including the Director of Financial Aid from DCC as well as Director of Programs at the Community Foundation sponsor of Valley. Recently, I met with the Board Subcommittee on Curriculum and we discussed making this information more widely available to parents. So in the future, we'll publicize this event so it will include all parents in the district. We'll get ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade parents. The high school program studies for 2014, 15 has been completed. We have, we'll have links posted on the website and a PDF will be emailed home to parents of students. Our guidance councils will begin programming with current juniors in the upcoming weeks and once those program meetings have been held, and we have course requests and the guidance councils and I will begin writing next year's schedule. Last week, the Director of Critical Destruction, I attended a presentation at Duchess County Community College that represented programs in which DCC partners with local high schools. As a result of this meeting, my conference with Mr. Krebs, high school department chairs and I will be exploring increasing the number of DCC courses that we offer for concurrent enrollment. As you know, at this point, we offer one course, Statistics, which, in which students are eligible to earn DCC credit. We're going to explore some other courses that students may be able to take and earn dual credit with the aim of enhancing the college readiness of our students. The second semester, as you know, starts on Monday and we will be beginning two new electives in the high school. As you know, we started the psychology elective in the first semester. Second semester, we'll be offering social psychology. And then the art department will be offering digital photography, which is slightly oversubscribed at this point, so both courses are going to be very well-scheduled. Moving to extracurricular activities, over break or right before break, the art club and student council successfully completed their community service project entitled Boxes of Joy. Gifts were collected, 73 boxes were personally customized for children at the Astor Home and members of the art club and student council took some time at the end of the day to deliver those gifts to the children there. Next week, as I think I mentioned during my last report, what I want to reemphasize, we'll have our third annual spirit meet sponsored by the student council culminating in a pep rally, thanks to the cooperation of Mr. Kempitzer and allowing us to adjust our schedule a little bit. And that evening, the ninth and 10th graders will host a semi-formal dance here at Rhinebeck High School. And there's nothing like a good old-fashioned school dance on school grounds. And this week, the Rhinebeck High School Winter Choral Concert will take place January 30th at 7:30. And this is out of order, but I'd like to mention this, that last week, our teachers, our math teachers began their student-initiated drop-in math labs for students. As you recall, we put that in place specifically to assist students. As you recall, we put that in place specifically to assist students in the Integrated Algebra One, or Algebra One and Algebra One A system in the Common Core, but there are math labs also for students in all of our math courses.
Fantastic. Laura?
Can you tell us about the new school newspaper? I was thrilled to see it in our packet. Rhinebeck Reality?
Oh, sure, absolutely. We've had that publication for some time. We try to, or I should say that the students in the club try to one, two, three, sometimes four editions a year. And it's a completely student-created document publication. Mr. Welsh is the advisor, and he gets through a great job in writing and laying out.
It was great. I was thrilled to see it.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to the club.
Lisa?
What was the date of the dance?
Dance is February 7th.
Any other questions?
Tickets will be available at the door. Tickets are available on the line tickets that we sold at the door. It's one of the artist's fave at Principal School. No tickets at the door. Learn that when you first start, but...
You're showing your flexibility.
Absolutely. We have great kids.
Well, thank you. Really, all of you, just, you know, always fantastic things going on, both like our regular academic program and the enrichment to the academic program, all the collaborations with community organizations, the generosity of our students, and the ways that they connect with organizations outside and communities outside our own school. So, you know, always, I can't wait till some of this information is readily available always on the website, because I just feel like there's so many things you guys said that I'd love to have highlighted on the website so members of our community could go look and go, wow, look at all these things going on all the time that you just don't necessarily know about unless your own child is involved with it, or, you know, you hear this. But I just want to thank you for all your work. And I am just going to add one little tiny thought, just because it's on my mind, and you mentioned financially. It came up around this table at one point. I'm just going to throw it out there, an idea of doing some kind of workshop at the elementary level for people using a couple of resources within our own community of individuals who do, can give advice to people on how to save for college. So that, I thought was a, I think it was Diane Cantares' idea, that might be an extension of the kind of work you're doing in the high school level, but to start young and give people information about the kinds of accounts you can open and ways you can start to save young. So, yeah. But again, thank you so much. We have our Good News section of the agenda later, and really, you did it all here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We move now on to our 2014-15 budget development update.
Yeah, all we really have to offer this evening is an update, no, it's not an update, it's a mention, I guess, of the executive budget that, the state budget that the governor... I'm looking for the right verb here, and I'm struggling. So I guess I'll be kind and say present, yeah, that's about as neutral as I could say. You'll notice from the information that I put in your packet that it looks like we're going to get about $32,000 less in state, at least we're projected to under the governor's budget. This is not a final budget. The, pretty much, the standard default on the budget is that the final budget is often or typically at least somewhat higher than the executive budget. Not sure whether that'll be the case this year or not. A couple of things to note, it's a net decrease of $32,000, but you'll notice if you compare the top section with the bottom section, which compares current year aid with estimated aid for the 2014-15 school year, is that there are some reductions in some of the expense-based aids. The expense-based aids are things that we get aid for only when we spend the money for it. So if you spend less money, then you get less aid. It only, you know, I mean, that's one part of this that actually makes sense, is you spend less, you get less aid. So, you know, we've seen a slight decrease in terms of some of our special education costs. So that's what category is, that's private or high-cost access cost. And we've spent, you know, a little less in BOSI services, so we're getting a little less BOSI's aid. That seems to be the main thing, but, you know, the way the governor would speak is that, you know, there was this huge windfall in additional state aid. Well, we didn't get it, and I'm sure there are other school districts that are quite, in quite worse shape than Rhinebeck is fortunate to be financially, and hopefully they got it, but we didn't anyway. That said, there is an interesting little item at the very bottom of that column, which is $277,209 for Smart Schools allocation. Again, with the executive budget, a lot of the devils are in the details, and that's a kind of a devilish detail. It supposedly is additional money we're supposed to get for technology infrastructure, but the governor's presentation was very sure on exactly how that's going to work or how we're going to get. And that's not included in the aid figure. That's kind of an additional chunk of money, which if we got another $277,000, that would be a wonderful thing. We've got, you know, now that we have a director of technology who's making laundry lists here, there, and everywhere, we could certainly spend that $277,000 without blinking an eye. So if we were to get that, that'd be a nice, a nice little chunk of change to enable us to upgrade what we can offer to our students in terms of technology. Anything else I'm missing on this, Tom?
Well, the other one that wasn't brought up here was the freezing of the property taxes if you met certain criteria. Actually, the business officials are getting together on Friday to discuss this because it really, it's on a county-wide basis, you know, supporting each other to reduce our costs by doing shared services. So we're looking at it. It's a very tall order as we look at it to meet the criteria, but we'll look and see what we can do to come out with that. Problem is, a lot of the things we already do, but we'll look and talk about other possible shared services that we could possibly do to reduce our cost so that we meet the requirements to qualify for that. But like you said, the devil's in the detail, and that's what we're trying to pick through and figure out exactly what is required of the school district to determine what we need to do to, you know, meet the criteria to get that tax freeze, to get that reimbursement to us. And to go back to the Smart Schools allocation, we won't know about this until November of next year, because this supposedly is going to be a proposition that will be on the ballot. It's supposed to be like a $2 billion proposition, but it'll be on the ballot, and it will be up to the voters in New York State to say yes or no to this proposition.
That's why it's not in the aid figure, because it's dependent on that bond being...
So if the bond is not approved, it's a simple no, it's not happening. But we won't know until November what that outcome is, and that's a long ways off, but we'll keep our eyes and ears open for that one.
The other thing to bring to your attention, if you've been reading the newspapers, you've been hearing a lot about the duel between our governor and New York City Mayor de Blasio over Universal Pre-K. I would bring your attention to the line item in the governor's budget for Rhinebeck for Universal Pre-Kindergarten, which is zero. So I'm not exactly sure how that's going to work. You know, we're having some very preliminary discussions about, you know, potential possibilities and logistics, but again, if the amount of aid we get would be zero, then I'm not sure Universal Pre-K will be all that universal, at least in this part of our great state of New York. But we're looking at it, so we'll prepare ourselves for the large bag of money that I'm sure the governor will be delivering post-haste. But I'm not holding my breath on that. I would just say that much.
Joe, is it your understanding, and it's not clear to me, genuinely curious, is it your understanding that we're going to be mandated to provide Pre-K district-wide, whether we get state money to do it or not?
That's not my understanding, and only because there's been so little real information that's been put out there other than Universal Pre-K. What does Universal Pre-K mean? I don't know, and no one I've talked to, except perhaps the governor, I haven't talked to him, really knows what, and that's what we're kind of having that discussion. Does that mean, you know, Pre-K for every kid in your school, in your school district who qualifies for, you know, four-year-olds by December 1st of this year, five-year-olds by December 1st of that year? A lot of school districts that I'm aware of that are less financially solvent than Rhinebeck is have Pre-K program. They're typically half-day programs. They typically don't serve every child who might attend. They're typically targeted at lower-income children. So I mean, this whole idea of depending whatever Universal Pre-K means, once that definition gets rolled out, I mean, I think there's a long way to go between wherever we are now and your idea of, does it mean every kid, every school district statewide, whether we give you the money or not? Even though the governor has said he's ready to give de Blasio a blank check, apparently this, all of a sudden, there's plenty of money in the state for these, $2 billion apparently that's going to fund this tax freeze and a whole bunch of other stuff. But no one said yet, and, you know, we're so far away, I think, from a definition of that, that I'm not, you know, I'm not losing sleep over that one. But we are having discussions logistically, would we have the space where we, to get money to run that kind of program? What kind of program? What might it look like? So we're just, we're getting prepared so we don't get caught unawares when the windfall comes.
So this, just, you know, especially for newer members, I mean, this is sort of the typical process. The governor comes out with a budget, you know, then when the legislature, you know, has to tackle it, there are all kinds of politics that are going on. Of course, the politics always between the state and New York City are, you know, big newsmakers. So it's, you know, one thing that's happened more recently, at least a budget is passed in the past two, maybe, two years, three years. By the time we have to go out to our community for our budget, whereas in, for many, many years, the state budget wasn't even completed and passed until well past we had, when we had to get our budget voted on. So we didn't even have good information. So, but that, all of this plays out in Albany, and we sort of kind of wait and see what happens. But our lobbying with our legislators when we do that, that's our state legislators, that's when that comes in about our perspective. Did you have a question, or?
Yes, I was just wondering if you have any more specific information on the property tax freeze proposal? In that, you said it was a county-wide thing, the entire county has to come up with 1% decrease over three years. And is it, does that include town, villages, and schools? And do you know, is it 1% on the rollover budget, on levy expenditures?
Those are a lot of questions we have with ourselves. Our thinking is, first of all, it's on the levy, not on your total budget. It's on the taxes that you're having to raise. So you've got to remember, you know, Poughkeepsie City School District has the same tax levy as we do. If you look at budget to budget, they're three times the size of ours, but when it comes to a taxes, we're the same. So you bring up some good questions, and that's why we're meeting, we're trying to get all the business officials in Duchess County together so we can all go over it together so that we're all on the same page, so we don't have misinformation. You know, do we include the town? So, you know, what if the school districts do everything we're supposed to do, but our town doesn't? What if we lose out because the town didn't? Those are some of the things we don't know. It seems very complicated, and there's a whole lot of, I say there's some detail, but what it actually means is another question, and then we start assuming things. And, you know, assuming is not a good thing because it really makes the...
Well, we can, you know, as you get information, you can also certainly funnel it through the Finance Committee, what that information is.
Yeah, we'll have to follow it. They're really very short on details at this point, but I mean, you're asking all the right questions that we should be asking. Right now, it's mostly speculation, but we'll, you know, we'll track it really closely. The other thing, especially for the newer board members, is now that we have an executive budget, even though it's not necessarily the final budget, the conventional wisdom is that this is the worst it's going to get. So we would typically use these figures when we're generating our revenue and expenditures for our 2014-15 budget, and then if we're lucky enough to be able to revise it up at some point later in the state's budget deliberations, we will. But we tend to use the governor's budget as kind of the worst-case, bottom line, this is what we'll get, so let's plan around this. If it gets better, great. If it doesn't, well, at least we're prepared. So you'll see this reflected in our next, you know, revenue projections, and we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Okay. Thank you.
That's correct.
Thanks very much for that report. We'll move on now to board committee reports, which we have used. So we'll start with the Personnel Committee minutes.
I did those. Pretty sometime, parents get into contract negotiations. There's a chart attached. They talk about the excess tax and what that'll look like, plans that we currently have. So, anything else?
Any questions for personnel? Okay. Policy Committee, Mark?
Well, we met last week, and we continued the task of reviewing the policy manual. We also reviewed a policy on information security breach and notification and proposed regulation, which we will be bringing to our first reading by the full board in the near future. But the main business that we conducted was to review the policy manual, and you see the list of policies that we did look at. Basically, what we've been doing is going through the policies and making some notes about, you know, possible changes, and later on, after we decide that we're at a good point, we can bring some of those changes to the full board. Most of them are worrying changes, for example, in some of the communications policies about, you know, adding the website to the policy, because it's not in there right now. So those are the type of things we're working on.
Questions for Policy? Well, I'm impressed with how much you've reviewed already. You guys set a big dent for yourselves this year, so thank you. We'll move on now to the Curriculum Committee.
Those I did, and I promise I'll be briefer than the notes. We first finished up our conversation about the Accelerated Reader, and Deirdre had spoken with a seventh-grade parent who has a reluctant reader, and she had very high commendations for the program. It's gotten her student to read more, to try to get more points. So though this program doesn't work for everybody as well as we'd like it, I think it's probably, it seems to be the best tool out there to get kids to read outside of their classwork. Then we invited Dr. Davenport to come talk to us about what it means to be college and career-ready. He talked a little bit about the survey that was done a few years ago, and the response rate was really low, and mostly, it seemed, from very successful Rhinebeck alums. So the data isn't particularly useful for our purposes. But we talked about the possibility of surveying seniors as they leave, and apparently there is a survey that the seniors are asked to take. It's about four or five questions, and maybe we can expand upon that to get more feedback about their experiences here and how prepared they feel for college, whether they know or not. how prepared they feel for college, whether they know it or not. And we talked about the college and career class, and the visits from local professionals, and we're hoping that we can try to leverage this opportunity and make it more meaningful for the students and for the presenters. These professionals come in and talk to the students about what they do, and oftentimes, they're professionals that, you know, most kids don't know anything about. So, we're hoping that maybe the Guidance Office can talk to the presenters, maybe pre-presentation and post-presentation, to get their feedback, and sort of help prepare them to talk to the kids in a, in a meaningful and engaging way. We then talked about low-performing students, and Dr. Davenport gave us some information about the more technical courses offered here at the high school, and also the CTI courses offered at BOSI's. Apparently, the participation rate is rising, so Guidance feels like they're doing a pretty good job of informing students about those opportunities. And Dr. Davenport stole our thunder about the financial aid meeting, but I, the Communications Committee is going to hopefully take on the idea of communicating more about guidance meetings and offering it up to a larger group of parents, so they can be more informed earlier on. Then we asked Mr. Krebs to talk about differentiated learning, and how we provide differentiated learning for our kids. He gave us a brief history of differentiated learning from the 1950s till today, and then, but discussed the fact that there, he sees some opportunities for using some different approaches in our classrooms. And rather than jumping right in with any particular methodology, he'd like to pilot some programs that he can assess over time, but he would like more time with his teachers so that they can collaborate. And finally, quickly, we talked a little bit about new teachers and how we give them the proper support to develop their craft and become good, strong, highly effective teachers. Maybe the Personnel Committee would like to look at the mentoring program a little bit, and see if there are ways that we can provide more supports for our new teachers. And that's it for this.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Curriculum? Well, you guys also have a big agenda, so thank you. All right. Very good. We move now on to our comment section. Good news. We have any, as I said, we had a lot of good news tonight from our principals, but does anyone have anything they'd like to add? Okay. Very good. Then we'll move on to old business. Does anyone have any thing, items for old business? I just, just talking about the state budget and lobbying, just a reminder that maybe we could, in the next couple of months, in February, early March, kind of that, in the past, has seemed to be our timeline for trying to set up meetings with state legislators. We have another opportunity for public comment, would any members of the public like to make any comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Other. Does anyone have any items for Other? I just want to draw everyone's attention to the fact that, just in the ongoing, you know, controversies surrounding Common Core, the New York State United Teachers have voted, at least some partial counsel, I think it goes out to full membership in a couple of months, to call on the, to withdraw their support for Common Core, and to call on Commissioner King to resign, actually. So, in the ongoing political battles at the state surrounding education reform, that's just one more piece of news. Anything else under Other? And we will be, Joe is handing me a note, I have to sign the, our own letters to the Commissioner and to Chancellor Tisch and the rest of the Board of Regents on our perspective on some of these education reform changes, and this will also be posted on the website. So, thanks for getting that done. All right. Anything else under Other? All right, we move on now to our action items. We're working from the agenda that is at your table. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, then seeing none, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve as a final reading and adoption of Board Policies Number 4321.1, Provision of Special Education Services in the Least Restrictive Environment, 4321.2, School-Wide Pre-Referral Approaches and Interventions, 4321.6, Availability of Alternative Format Instructional Materials for Students with Disabilities, 4321.7, District-Wide and Statewide Assessments of Students with Disabilities, 4321.9, Declassification of Students with Disabilities, 4321.11, Public Report on Revisions to District Policies, Practices, and Procedures Upon a Finding of Significant Disproportionality, and 4321.14, Special Education Personnel Qualifications and Training.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Thanks again to the Policy Committee for getting these moved along. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to renumber the following policies as follows. Allocation of Space for Special Education Programs and Services, from 4321.1 to 4321.3, Impartial Hearing Officer Selection, Appointment and Compensation, from 1921 to 4321.8, and Homeless Children and Youth, Number 4329 to Number 5151.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? Thanks again for the cleaning up of the Board Policy Book. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of Laura Bald as a long-term substitute in the position of Grade 8 Science Teacher at Bulbly Middle School, at the pleasure of the Board, effective on or about February 5th, 2014 through May 5th, 2014, at the salary of Step 1 MA plus 6, $57,006 prorated, in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA Salary Schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Kristen Kogle, Grade 8 Science Teacher at Bulbly Middle School.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes.
Table.
Okay, we have to table Item 6.5, since the, our auditor is not here this evening, and we'll reschedule that hopefully for our next meeting. Moving on to Item 6.6, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve mentors for new teaching staff, starting mid-year during the 2013-14 school year through their one-year anniversary date.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint additional 2013-14 CLS Before-School Enrichment Program instructors?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint an additional 2013-14 RHS After-School Program Instructor?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Susan Cotter to the Civil Service Position of Food Service Helper, effective January 9, 2014, at a rate of $11.25 per hour, at four hours per day, with a 26-week probationary period?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to adopt the following resolution, whereas pursuant to the provisions of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, ACA, for variable-hour employees, the district is required to establish a standard measurement period, adopt an administrative period, and a stability period. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education establishes the following periods for the categories of variable-hour employees set forth below. For category of employee, category 1, per DM substitute, the standard measurement period is six months, the administrative period is 30 days, and the stability period is six months. For category 2 employees, which are all other variable-hour employees, E.G. non-pedagogical substitutes, coaches, activities supervisors, and substitute administrators, the standard measurement period is 12 months, the administrative period is 30 days, the stability period is 12 months.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that one's passed. May I have a motion now to move into executive session for the discussion of the employment history of a particular vendor?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous, we're moving into executive session. Thank you all for being here.